Good evening, everyone. A call to the meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for our Tuesday, April 9th. This meeting is being recorded by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 9, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page of our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Our community prayer. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces, in our first responders, in our hearts and thoughts. Amen. The first item on our agenda this evening, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
Ma'am?
Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, thank you. Judy Richards, Five Million Way. I'll try to keep this quick. I know everybody's busy. We're in a budget year. We have new staff, new big staff. But lately, I've noticed, when I've been going to the North Carver Water District, there's a big problem up there. And I think it's something that the board needs to really pay attention to because we're spending money to keep that open, and it's not doing nothing for nobody. It's been closed. We've been getting water from Middleborough. So my questions are, why are we getting water from Middleborough? And why is the North Carver Water District not producing water? And it's my understanding that there's town legislation, or it's town staff, that are supposed to be responsible for the running of the plant. I didn't know if, when you are doing your budget, if you can maybe bring them in to explain why it's costing us money and we're not getting anything in return from there. And the gossip that's been going around is that they hope the North Carver Water District just goes away. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else this evening? All right. Moving right along. We do have our finance director, Ms. Preval, with us this evening. I know she's on our 5:15 agenda item, but with the board's permission, we'll move right to that agenda item. That way, we can let her get on with her evening. Any objections? Adam? Ms. Preval, we asked you to come in this evening. One of our members, Mr. Carter, had asked for an update on some of the town financial policies, specifically Policy 3F, 6, and 7. Why don't we start with 3F, which I believe are the solar pilot agreements?
I think it was 7 and 3F. 6 is just...
I think 6 is some of the shared costs, which I think you asked for as well.
Okay.
But, okay. Ms. Preval?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my understanding...
If you could just make sure you use the microphone for the folks at home.
Testing.
There you go.
Through you, Mr. Chair. It is my understanding that Policy, letter F, the intent is for the Finance Committee in the town to set aside funds annually, split equally, one-third, you know, as a third, coming from a revenue source of tax revenue, which is generated through the solar farms. The town currently has 16 pilot programs with an estimated revenue of $1,322,372, and these are through contracts that we have with the vendors that are in the pilot program. It's my understanding that the intent of the town is to have a reserve fund, three reserve funds, one for OPED unfunded liabilities, one for capital debt stabilization fund, and for the middle school stabilization fund.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last thing.
For the middle school stabilization fund.
Okay.
Those are the three stabilization funds that the town would like to use this revenue source from, split a third and a third, you know, in order to save money. I completely support setting aside funds annually to manage revenue reserve targets. I think it helps with long-term financial sustainability, and I think it's seen positively by the rating agencies. And having financial policies that are established that we can manage consistently each year is extremely important. I feel that, at this time, I'm new to the town, and I don't think it would be in the town's best interest for me to offer a recommendation in terms of how this is going to affect our FY '25 budget, because I'm still in the process of putting it together. And I asked the Select Board if I could revisit this policy when I have, you know, more information in terms of putting the FY '25 budget together. And then you'll be able to see that split and what the town's looking for.
Mr. Carter, this was your agenda item. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a lot of ideas and concepts, but I'd rather, I mean, meeting the schools and whatever, and we can talk about it.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Mr. Carter.
Make sure you make your point as well.
Without taking a lot of time, I wanted to kind of go over the history with you and why these policies were created, where we came from, when we couldn't do any kind of infrastructure at all, and we had multiple field votes for debt exclusions. That's what created these financial policies. So I went through and reverse engineered ATM articles from '18 to '21 to find out exactly what was done, because it wasn't done cleanly. But my concern is that somewhere between '22 and '25, to a certain extent, have gone away, or they're not trackable, is what is my concern.
Okay.
So through you, Mr. Chair, I don't want to tie the board with this. We can have a, you know, meeting separately.
I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
Without tying up the board for an hour, going over ATM articles for the past four years, I should probably have a separate meeting.
I was going to ask through the chairman, if we had a working group that was in place before, would it make sense to kind of pull those people back again and just work on some of this, some objectives here as to how we can find some good compromises and effective ways to use it? We do have, you know, some budgetary issues we want to, in the short term, have to deal with, as long as a long-term strategy of using these funds. And could we find some compromises and maybe put a working group together to look at that?
Well, I think that probably is a reasonable idea. But I think at some point, we've come a long way on this year's budget, and probably, I think, hopefully, within the next month, certainly within the next, I think, 45 days, hopefully, we'll have a new town administrator. We have a new finance director. And I think that would probably be the appropriate time to let that new town administrator pull this together, because no doubt, they may have thoughts on these financial policies as well. And that would give everyone a chance to revisit these as we move forward. They have been updated. If you look at the financial policies here, they've been updated, oh, I don't know, probably 10 or 11 times since we... So it's not unusual to update those, and it probably makes sense to have that type of group do that.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to agree with you, and I think that we should let Ms. Preval do her job right now. She is new, and I think, let's just stay with what we have and work on this when the budget is more complete. That's my feeling.
Which is fine, but I just want you to be clear that this is something that we just didn't stop looking at now. We looked at this back in November, and they were just opinions not to address it. So I agree, we should have firmer numbers, bring you up to speed, and then we come up to some consensus.
Well, Ms. Preval first, then Mr. Carter.
You know, as I listen to what everybody's saying, I think it's really important that everybody has a say in terms of what we're doing for the town. I really want to understand every stakeholder that has an interest in how we are utilizing our funds. This doesn't go on deaf ears. I know that, you know, if you're looking at, you know, almost $440,000 being put into debt stabilization, $440,000, which is the third split of the pilot, being put into the middle school and into OPED. That's a lot, but I definitely feel that, you know, whatever we do in terms of presenting this luck board with a balanced budget, that these three stabilization funds will be addressed and will be part of the budget. Might not be at that amount that we're looking at, but we have to really figure out where we are in terms of balancing the budget. But I definitely agree, you know, with Mr. Ryan, that having a working group, I am more than willing to chair a subcommittee that can look at the different policies for the towns. You know, I come with, you know, more than a decade worth of experience in setting financial policies and looking at best practices that are set by the GFOA. So I definitely think that's an exercise I'm really looking forward to being part of.
Mr. Ryan?
Do modifications of the policy require town meeting vote? Is that how it's been done in the past?
That's how it's been done in the past.
Well, I mean, if you look at the first page of the policy, it does contain a statement that, it says, "It's equally important that the town maintain flexibility in its finances to ensure that the town is in a position to react and respond to changes in the economy." And I think that's, I mean, these financial policies are policies, but I don't think they're chiselled-in-stone policies. So I think the town needs a little flexibility to move on a basis if they're presented with financial challenges. This certainly has been a challenging year. These are Select Board financial policies.
Yeah, they're not, and they're not bylaws, I think, yeah.
Right, yeah, these are not bylaws. So the Select Board set these policies, and yes, I would think if we were going to change a policy, then it would come back, again, as it has been done a number of times. I would come back here and we'd vote to amend the policy. And from time to time, we do.
Yeah, I agree, but just to go back, that the process generally with policies, and correct me, Karen, if you think this is not the path, is that you determine your revenue first, right, in the budgetary process? Then you apply your policies, and in this case, we've got policies and shared costs to come up with a net number to be shared between the town and the school side of the government. If that calculation shows massive deficits, then yeah, you have to start looking, can I do this? Can I handle this policy? Can I fund this? Can I do that? In this case, our policies were ignored from day one. It was just, now we're looking at saying, hey, what are we doing here? Are we going to vote to ignore them completely, or are we going to do something with them? That's kind of the hurdle I'm dealing with, is that they were never really officially put into the budgetary process.
And I think from previous meetings, including our goal session way back when we first reorganized, I think a majority of the board made it clear at that time that we think our financial policies are important and they should be followed. So I think that's pretty, I think we made that pretty clear.
Sure.
I do want to give, we have a couple of representatives from the school here. I want to give you folks a chance to say something, if you have anything you'd like to add. Okay? On any of these...
I don't think there's anything for us to weigh in at this time.
Okay. Okay, just please, if any of these discussions, if you feel there's something you'd like to add, just please, please join us. Okay, are we good on 3F?
Yes.
Here? Okay. So I believe, Mr. Carter, you also wanted to talk about the shared costs and the split. I think the shared costs are addressed in our financial policy number 6. That's where I think they're addressed. Anyway, that's why I put it on the agenda, so you could have the shared costs that you wanted to talk about addressed.
Again, I'm just seeing them in seven, but that's fine.
Okay, that's fine. They're both on the agenda, so...
So the question is, and Karen, if you've had a chance to look at this, and I'm not sure if all towns do this, I hear sometimes they do these allocations or whatnot, but...
Mr. Carter, if you could just make sure you speak into the microphone.
So if you look back from the, historically, look at our annual town meetings, we've had shared cost numbers back in 2018, around $5,600,000, and it grew to about $7 million in fiscal year '22, then jumped to $12 million in '23, and $13 million in '24. So the main reason for that was a move of health insurance out of departments into a shared cost line, which affects the split. So can you think, is there a financial reason to do that? Do towns do that from a standpoint of reallocating health insurance to shared costs?
What I, to answer your question, in my history of doing budgets, that would be no. I think that the most important thing when you're looking at budgets, you are correct in revenue. The first thing, revenue dictates what we can spend, but I think that you have to have an exercise looking at your discretionary and non-discretionary governmental expenses. You know, non-discretionary or mandatory, things are going to allow the services for the town to be rendered, where you have, you know, your discretionary, where there are things that, you know, maybe one year you have it, maybe one year you don't. But I think that is a lot more involved in terms of looking at a budget and figuring out, you know, net school spending, non-net school, and how you incorporate a school budget within the town. I think that it's a very long exercise. It's not something where you can put in presents. I think you have to look at what the needs are for the students and figure out, okay, what is our goal in the town? You know, what are some of our priorities, you know, moving forward? And just going back to your stabilization funds, you know, how are we going to fund this so that if there's an emergency, we have something set aside that is going to happen every single year, so we know that no matter what happens, no matter how the budget comes in, we're putting money aside to cover things that may come up? And I think that, you know, we are planning for what's going to happen in the town, not during our time, but 10 years out, 20 years out. You know, what we're planning for is what are we going to do financially that's going to make us sustainable when we're no longer here? And then someone else is taking the torch. And I think that, you know, when we set policies and we set procedures, they really should be looking at the long term of the town. One thing I did do is I have, just, the questions have come up in terms of, how do you determine the school's budget? And based off of past practice, I have put together a spreadsheet that I can pass out to everyone, and I can explain how the town has come up with a number for the FY '25 budget. This is the same formula that has been used. The consultant, George, had been working on months with the town over the last, I think, six or seven months. So this is a number that you're going to see when Elaine presents the balanced budget to you, so I can pass, I can give a copy to everyone, and I can kind of go through that.
Great, thank you. Everybody, everybody have one? Thanks for putting this together.
Oh, you're welcome. I thought it would be easy, sometimes having a visual where you can see it. So the way the school's budget was put together, and this has been a past practice, is that when we look at revenue sources, we're taking our tax levy, and for FY '25, the tax levy is at 33, 446, 707. We also take the state aid, but the state aid is net our offset receipts that are set aside for the library and for student tuition, which are not revenue that we can use because it's allocated, that is put into a revolving fund and used specifically for those purposes set aside by the state. We then have our local receipts estimating number. That total revenue figure is the figure that we're using for revenue. Some people may know that revenue also includes free cash, it includes your available funds, but for this purpose, it's only, you're looking at your tax levy, your state aid, and your local receipts. The town has identified costs that are shared between the town and the school. That snow operations, snow and ice operations, these are operating costs that reside within the DPW budget, but it's just a line item in the budget. We have health insurance, which is part of the benefits that the town pays for. We have overlay. Overlay is our allowance for abatement, and that's money that we have to set aside for the public residents that may dispute their tax bill. And if they dispute it, and we realize that their value was, you know, lower or higher, and they need a refund, the town sets aside money every year so that if there are refunds that we have money to pay for them. This overlay was not part of the shared cost last year, and this must have been in discussion between the school and George that was working on this, and the town administrator's office to put it in the FY '25 budget. We also have the Plymouth County Retirement, the excluded debt, the non-excluded debt, Old Colony, copier lease, the copier lease, this is an item that's in the IT budget, and we have FinCom Reserve Fund. And in the warrant, this is appropriated into the operating budget, but I wanted to understand from the Select Board if your intent was to have FinCom Reserve money go into a reserve fund compared to it being part of the operating budget. Then you have your pilot reserves, which was for the middle school, and I'm assuming your intent was to have that go into a reserve fund compared to how it's voted in your warrant, which has it part of your operating budget. And then you have unemployment, which is, you know, part of benefits in the benefits section of the budget. So the total shared operating cost, I have revenue, but they're actually costs. It's been listed as revenue in the past, but these are actual costs that we are going to be reducing revenue by. So as you take your total revenue of the $48,687,129, you subtract your shared operating costs of $13,323,039, that then gives you a total of $35,364,090. At the bottom of the sheet, I have a summary showing the total revenue base, the shared, subtracting the shared costs, which then gives you the base of how the town has determined the school budget, where there's a split of 68.4%, that's allocated to the school, and then we have 31.6% for the town. So the current FY '25 school budget in our projections is set at $24,189,038 right now.
Thank you. Are there questions on this? Mr. Carter?
Well, yeah, I mean, I heard what you said about the health insurance. That's been two years. For, I don't know, 20 years, health insurance has never been in shared costs. The overlay, I think of it that way, but it makes sense. I'm not sure how the pilot reserves are calculated. But again, I think that, in order to stay comparative to the way we've done this in the past, and again, unless there's a financial reason to keep health insurance in shared costs when they're basically by individual employee, you could do it by individual department. My feeling is they should come out, go into the departments, and maybe we have to raise these splits to make them more accurate. Maybe it's more, I don't know, 74 school and the difference being the town, but make them a true, make them a true split as to what actually the expenses are.
I think that's something...
It's a discussion.
Yeah, I think as Ms. Preval has a chance to go forward and get her hands around these budgets a little more, you know, that's a discussion that we can certainly have. Can you tell, what is the pilot reserves? What is that?
So this particular line item in the budget last year was the middle school reserve.
Okay.
And so I guess there's work that's going to be done at the middle school, and there was $225,000 set aside in your budget last year in the operating, which is still available, that will be moved into reserve fund. It's in the operating because that's how it was voted by town meeting, but that if the intent was it to be, if the intent was to hold that money in a reserve fund for work that's going to be done on the middle school at some time, then that's something that would have to come to the Select Board and, you know, in the warrant, change that language so that we can have that.
Is it possible the pilot reserve, because it's only $75,000, is that like the same thing as the overlay, that if they don't receive the money, they're just putting some reserve aside?
No. This, so the money, when I look at the budget, and I haven't had a long time to kind of absorb all of this, and that's why I feel like we really need to sit down and have a working group to go over this, because if you go back to Policy Number, which we just discussed, and we go back to Policy Number 3F, the intent of this policy was to take the pilot money and split it in thirds. Last year, $225,000 was allocated to the middle school, which was part of that policy, but you don't have the same amount being allocated into OPED or the capital debt stabilization. When you're looking at stabilization funds, you have to do a, you know, review of your capital projects. What are my capital needs over the last four to five years, and understanding what projects are actually going to be started, you know, at a particular period of time? If you look at your FY '24 warrant, there are capital projects, and there's more than $1 million worth of prior-year capital project balances that were being allocated for the FY '24 budget. So as I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, well, departments came to the Select Board to ask for a capital project. Did it not, you know, for some reason, it may have been delayed? For some reason, it may be, it wasn't needed anymore, and those balances were now being used to fund new capital projects? And I feel that, you know, as you review all of this, there has to be a conversation of, okay, these are capital projects that everyone approved at some point, you know, more than $1 million. That $1 million could have been split three ways to put into stabilization funds if the project wasn't going to happen. So I think that it's a conversation, and it's a work in process of working in a group to really understand this, because based off of that policy, a third was not put into all those three different categories. So I think that's something that we have to look at. And in terms of the health insurance, as John has stated, we need to look at. I mean, I've gone through the health insurance and looking at, you know, the number of employees that are funded out of this, the retirees, the town's portion that we fund to cover the retirees, to cover teachers, and to cover town employees. But I think it's a larger conversation that we need to have, and a deeper analysis of how we want to set the budgets, and then looking at the needs of the school department as well, and how we really want to set these aside, because these costs are part of individual departments, they're not separated. We have it separated in the warrant so that people can see what the shared costs are, but those costs really should be embedded within the department that they are expensed from.
And it seems like your and Mr. Ryan's idea to put together a group to explore these policies and review how these things are handled, seems like a really good idea and something needed. I just, like I said, it's not going to be long until we have a new town administrator, and certainly, they're going to have thoughts on this as well. So I think that's certainly something we should explore putting together as we move forward. Mr. Ryan?
I do think that it's going to take a little bit of time to get the information so that the new town administrator at least can review it. So there's a little bit of a learning curve and up to speed, so whatever the working crew could do to maybe get the information compiled, so then it could be brought to the town administrator, might not be a bad idea. If we wait till the town administrator's on, and we'll probably talk tonight about what that timeline might be, it could be potentially months down the road. So it may be worthwhile, at least compiling it and making sure we dot our i's, cross our t's, make sure the numbers all make sense and everything. That way, we have something to present. So it may not be a bad idea to start ahead of that.
Yeah, we could talk about that. But are there any other questions? I want to stick to the agenda here, where we're at.
There are, but I think it's best waiting till the working group and the, you know...
Mr. Carter, this was your agenda item.
Yeah, I mean, I feel that they've been raised as questions. The question is, what's the answer? So that's going to have to wait for another day.
Anything else? Any other members of the board? Ms. Preval, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
I can say that, you know, as you... I can say that, you know, as you, and I can see your passion in terms of, you know, addressing these policies that haven't been completely performed, I guess for a better word, and, you know, I can always, as I'm putting the budget together, put together a scenario and say, you know, well, let's see what this scenario looks like, you know, if we decide to not include health insurance as a shared cost, or if we decided not to include overlay as a shared cost, what does that number look like? And you can have different scenarios. So then you can see, you know, okay, if I were to change this, this is what it's going to look like, and this is the effect it's going to have. I think that is also important, as the school committees reviewing the school budget, we also understand what the needs are with the school. I think there's a lot of collaboration between the town and the school that have to occur, especially during the budget season, because everyone has so many different needs, and the same thing with the capital committee. So, you know, whatever I can do to provide the information to the select board, I'm definitely interested in hearing what your concerns are, because I'm trying to take everything in, and I'm taking notes, and I'm trying to make sure that as I provide information to you, it's going to be transparent, as I mentioned last night, and provides you the information that you need. So my door is always open if you have emails, if you have thoughts or concerns, as you mentioned, you know, the bringing the town administrator up to speed, I'm in the same boat, I'm in the same speedboat as being, you know, being brought up to speed, but at least if I'm brought up to speed, and then I've had, you know, a couple of weeks for a month to actually, you know, get really involved in understanding the budget that the town is going to be approving at some point, I can then work with the town administrator in a very collaborative manner so that we both understand and everyone understands what everyone's needs are.
Thank you. Anything else?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us this evening. We appreciate this, we appreciate the handouts, and good job.
You're welcome, thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But just before we move on, anything from, you guys good? Everyone's good? All right, thank you, thank you for being here as well. All right, at this point, we will move back to our five-ten agenda item, which is the approval of the election warrant for April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, hearing, not all in favor? Aye opposed? It is unanimous, thank you. All right, we will move on to discussion of the American Rescue Plan Act. We have a project update for this?
We do. So at the last board meeting, I updated the board that the fiber network was being submitted for reimbursement. We found out today that this project was rejected due to insufficient backup. This is our first and only project to date that has been rejected. This information just came to us today, so I don't have much information other than that. We are going to look into it, however, we are looking to see if we can apply for a state grant at this time, because we do believe it might qualify for that.
What was the amount of that?
That was the two hundred, this project was two hundred and eleven thousand. So you'll see as we go through, that amount has been put back into available Plymouth County funds, and we are awaiting a few potential requests for approval. I also spoke to the Plymouth County Commissioner's Office, they are scheduled to meet on April twenty-fifth, and they're anticipating that they will vote to extend the deadline for ARBA commitments from June thirtieth to sometime later in twenty-twenty-four. So I'm just going to go through and update, this is your summary sheet. You can see the balance remaining, that two hundred and eleven went back into Plymouth County. We have a balance in the federal funds, giving you our total. These are all the completed projects, I know you guys have probably gone through this many times. You can see the little line under number nine, we have received payment, reimbursement up through number nine. So we are going to be receiving a check, I believe at our May, our first meeting in May, I think it's May seventh. They're going to come with, present us with more checks. These are the projects that are pending approval. So they have been submitted, and we're just waiting to hear. And that, again, that two eleven number was backed out of this total. These are the projects that are not yet submitted, I'm going to go through these one by one just to give you a status update. The first project is the public safety radio tower infrastructure equipment for the South Carver Communications Tower, and the amount is seventy thousand. You can see by the picture that it is in process, and I'll just read you the status update, the communications enclosure provided by AD Makepeace has been installed, the electrical wiring and lighting to the enclosure has been completed and provided by Makepeace. A generator has been delivered and installed, again, that was provided by Makepeace. A two hundred and fifty gallon propane tank for the generator has been installed and is awaiting inspection approval, and the, we're waiting for the gas inspector to backfill piping in the trench. All antenna and dishes and cabling that will be installed on the top of the tower has been paid for and being stored at the fire department. Still awaiting to be completed is the climbing vendor industrial communications to install the antennas and the dish and the cabling from the top of the tower to the communications enclosure, and we're awaiting the radio vendor Cybercom to install the communications equipment that will be located in the communications enclosure that will operate the communications link. Does anyone have any questions on that?
No, thank you.
Our conference rooms, there is still a very small punch list waiting to happen that is anticipated to be completed by the end of April. And as you can see, we are already benefiting from these upgrades. The North Carver Water Connection Meter, this is, as we know, in the hands of Middleborough. We do have a timeline here, we are waiting for them to go out to bid, and they do have a date to submit to the central register. So that will be May eighth, twenty-four. Their deadline for bids will be June fifth, twenty-four. Their notice to proceed, which I believe is award letter, six nineteen, twenty-four. Their anticipated end of construction, I'm sure that has to do with weather permitting and availability of a contractor, would be November twenty-eighth, twenty-four, and contract closeout, January twenty-seventh, twenty-five. So it's nice to see a timeline on that.
It is, and if Plymouth County extends that deadline for new projects, that would help us a lot too, because it's always possible, this is, it's a lot of money, if this comes in on the budget, that would give us some extra money to spend on some different items, so it would be good to, good to get done.
Yep. The Carver Middle School Installation Mechanical System to provide better air quality for a hundred and eighty thousand, I think you're already aware of the status that they are just waiting until school ends to do the installation, which makes sense. The Council on Aging Kitchen Equipment for fifty-three thousand is ordered, and it is estimated that it will be installed by the end of May. The E nine-one-one system, again, I did speak on this at the last meeting, the school has their E nine-one, nine-one-one system in place already. The town had a trunk issue, so we decided to split the projects apart so the schools' submittal and reimbursement wouldn't get held up. So now we're just waiting for the town portion to be completed. The EOC equipment has been, actually, again, there's a small punch list left on that, so it is not completed yet, the anticipated date of completion is end of April. And when we get further on to the federal amounts, you'll see that the furniture was backed out of here and put under federal, because we know that's not going to be approved by Plymouth County. The outside deck at the Council on Aging for ninety thousand, after discussions with Dave Seidenthal, we are not sure this is going to be a viable project, he is trying to get another plan drafted to see if it will be a possibility, but just be aware that it just may not be possible, but they're going to give it another try.
Okay, was that because of the location of the deck?
Yes, the location currently was planned on top of their septic.
Okay.
Purchase of electric vehicles for forty-nine thousand dollars each for the inspectional departments, they are going to purchase those off of the state bid list, and that should be complete by the end of May. Decommissioning of twenty-two private wells for twenty-two thousand, the health agent is in the process of getting the three quotes, they are hoping to start this work in May and complete it by the fall. This will be dependent on cooperation of the homeowners. I'm not sure if you guys remember when they were doing the water lines, there were some delays due to that. Does anyone have any questions on any of those projects?
No. Everyone good?
For the federal projects, I did not do individual sheets on this, because they're basically mostly complete. The North Carver Water District Treatment System membranes, those are complete, the middle high school culinary is slated to be completed by the end of April. Public Safety Ballistic Protection has been ordered and arrived. The message signs, they are in the process of getting quotes for that, the police chief is. The EOC furniture, which we talked about earlier, has been, that furniture has been split out under federal. And then we have the two items under that total line, the codification of bylaws, that is pending town meeting approval, and the fire upgrade for the computers, the computers are in, and this is the case where we're just waiting for more parts. And the equipment that has been received is beginning to be installed. And that completes the ARBA update.
All right. Other questions?
No, thank you, great presentation.
No, thank you. We've gotten a lot of ARBA updates in this room, and I think that was the most detailed one we've ever had, so thank you very much, I appreciated that. All right. Moving forward, the next item is a discussion, a possible vote, select a town administrator and enter into contract negotiations. So I thought, unless the board has objections, we handle this in a couple of ways. So obviously, we have three town administrator applicants, different groups. Last week, interviewed people in different towns, I thought we could just discuss how those interviews went, what those thoughts were. After that, go around the room and give our thoughts on the three different candidates, the pluses and minuses, and when we get past that, I think we need to cut it from three to two. So perhaps we could go around and just, each one of us, give our top two candidates without any ranking, just one and two, and the top two people will, then we can, we'll get down to two, we can discuss it a little more, and at some point, we'll go around the room and I'll give us our number one, and somebody will get at least three, three votes for number one.
Okay.
Any thoughts or objections to that? Should be fine. All right, so I guess I'll, I'll start, and Sarah, please.
Oh, no.
Jump in.
No. I'll go last.
No, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about our discussions with, with the people in Rochester.
Sure, that's fine.
I think we, we went down, we met with the fire chief, the, I think it was the DPW director, whatever, whatever they call it in Rochester, and it was, it was a police lieutenant that the chief was out. All the discussions were positive, everybody had good things to say about, about the individual, and, you know, competent, I asked a lot of questions about how he handles himself. Stressful, you know, emergencies, middle of the night, that type of thing, all, everything was positive. All the interactions that the individuals had with the individual were positive, and it was, it was a good, it was a good interview. Ms. Wong, do you have anything you'd like to add to that?
Yes, I was impressed that the way you asked that question several different ways, because you, I think you really wanted to know, how does Mr. Cannon act under pressure? And, and they responded positively each, each time Mr. Townsend asked it, but with a different slant on it. So yes, he's, he's always there, twenty-four seven, and if he doesn't know the answer, he knows who will. I remember that as a, as a response. I even asked the question, now's your chance to tell us anything bad, and no one had anything bad to say. So I got a very positive impression, definitely capable, smart, honest, I got that impression as well.
Okay.
Okay. So we met with both Jason Silver and Charles DeCourse, and we met with the fire chief, police chief, and DPW person for each of them, but then the finance director was included with Mystica Corus also. So I'll start with Mr. Silver, references were glowing. We included the police chief and fire chief in ours, so, you know, our police chief, fire chief, I think they also went along with you two.
With us as well.
Yeah, so they were included because we were talking to the other police chief and fire chief, and that, that helped. And then the other two chiefs also joined us for our discussion last week too, here. So in, in general, yeah, glowing, they do not want to lose him, they, they said it would be very difficult for them if they, you know, so you, you wonder, it was a glowing reference, and they don't want to, you know, lose him, so they could have said, you know, no, don't hire him, he's bad, you know? But he was willing to do what it, what was needed to get the job done, very motivational, a hands-on person, very supportive of everyone, very helpful with the budget, so he had, you know, very strong budget background, found ways for the town to save money, he let the chief run their departments, he's a handoff, hands-off person, he knows that they need to do, you know, their job, and so he'll only get involved when, when needed to solve problems, and he did. So whenever they, the chiefs had problems to be resolved, they, they worked with Mr. Silver on that. He offers constructive criticism, he served as the procurement officer, he always helped finding avenues for funding. They said that he changed the morale of the environment, it was not a happy place to work before he came, and they said that he very much turned it around, and now it's a great working environment. He's the HR director, he always gets everyone's side of the story, and the select board relies on him very heavily, very open, easy to talk to, looks for new opportunities, and he's always in the office, he's very committed, he's always there. Do you want anything to Mr. Silver, John, from my house?
No, you pretty much covered it, I know there was an issue with regards to geography that he'd be traveling from up north, he currently has a commute of about an hour right now to Dunstable, and I thought that was commendable, the fact that he's always there, he's always on call. Yeah, he did, they did reference the situation with morale at Town Hall improving, he was very approachable, had an open-door policy. In my conversations with him, he seemed to be right on with regards to, you know, financial planning processes, any challenges the towns might have in getting through yearly funding, so that was good. Yeah, I mean, I thought he was, I think all three of these candidates, we can't really lose on.
And then, so, and Charles DeCourse, we also, again, met with the fire chief, police chief, finance director, and DPW, same thing, glowing, glowing references, he had served as mayor, we mentioned before, said he's very, very personable, highly esteemed by the people he worked with, such as the chiefs, they gave him the glowing reference, and they provided examples of the support he provided that they needed. One thing that stood out to them was his leadership during COVID, he said, they said it was a very difficult time, but he was, you know, he was very, he was, sorry, he was, just looking for my notes here, he kept his composure, he, he very much did a lot of planning, executed the plan, and, you know, very much helped the seniors and everything. So he said his leadership was off the charts when it came to like COVID and things like that, that he had to help out with, good negotiation skills, values employees, cared deeply about public safety. In critical situations also, he relied on the subject matter experts like the chiefs to do their job, but he was there, you know, to support them when they needed that, very supportive of the DPW, not a micromanager, knew when to step in in support and provide leadership, very knowledgeable on many subjects, worked many hours, so he was another one that they said just, always there, all the time, always acknowledged others' great accomplishments, fair but firm, praised people in public, but reprimanded in private, very much a people person, helped clear hurdles. reprimand in private, very much a people person, help clear hurdles, help with succession planning, always seek input from all departments for decisions. And then he fostered into department cooperations, who was always having one department help the other department when that was needed. Very positive, outgoing, personable person, able to effectively handle unpleasant situations and very approachable. John, anything else?
And I was just, you know, talking to them about, you know, I know their setup was that of a mayor. And I said, if you were the select board, talking to the, you know, police chief, fire chief, finance director, if he was the administrator and you the select board and his contract goes up, would you renew it? And they said in a heartbeat, they don't, they would highly recommend him. I know he's a mayor, so sometimes you might think of that as, I don't know, not being involved in nitty-gritty, but I think the finance director mentioned that he was heavily involved in, in financial operations. It would sometimes, you know, correct schedules sent to him by the finance director. So he wasn't someone that just seemed to be a delegator. He seemed like someone that could jump in and handle various tasks.
Mr. Townsend?
Yes.
I had a couple of other things that I thought of from my, from our interview with the public safety officials in Rochester. They also mentioned that Mr. Cannon was, was very hands-off, not a micromanager. But if you needed him, he would be there. He would, he was right there, ready to help. And he would tell you, if you, he thought you were doing something wrong, but he would respect you, what you were doing. I also forgot to mention that I have one of my contacts in Middleborough, served on the finance, Middleborough Finance Committee with him, because he lives in Middleborough. And his comments were that he's smart, honest and ethical. Thought that was pretty good.
No, I think so.
And just that he has been heavily involved in finance was a, something that they emphasized.
Okay. Well, Sarah, I know you asked to go last on this particular portion of our discussions here regarding the town administrator. So it's okay with me, if somebody else wants to do that, we'll, we'll figure that out. But I'll, I'll start, I have no issue starting. I think I was struck when we interviewed all three of these candidates and, and Ms. Hewens and Mr. Hoffman now, and I have had to do this on a number of occasions. I think this is the best group of candidates we've ever had for, for town administrator. I, I think the town would be well-served by any one of these three individuals. Couple of things really struck me during our, our interviews and our one-on-one discussions with them. As, as far as Mr. Silver, I, I was really struck by his work ethic. He, he, we talked about some different situations that had come up in Dunstable, and I was really impressed with the way he handled them. And, and I think he showed really good insight into some different things. For Mr. Kacoris, I will, I will tell you that of all the people I've ever discussed and interviewed for a town administrator job here in Carver, he had done more investigation into the town than anyone I've ever known. He, he could discuss the ins and outs of the North Carver Water District. He had looked into so many different things here in town, and I was really struck by that, because he had, just very, very impressive. And I, I think, you know, the term that the mayor, you know, it's a little different, right? The, the town administrator, mayor, very different. But I think we went into some of the details of the things he, he did in Braintree, and he showed a real hands-on involvement. If you look at his resume and his background, he's got a lot of involvement in a lot of different things, a very wide variety of municipal items. So I thought, you know, he was very qualified. And obviously, Mr. Cannon lives in Middleborough, town administrator in Rochester, you know, a lot of that local knowledge. And, and you can't, that's something you can't buy, or you can't learn somewhere. You either have it or you don't. And, and, and being that local, local person, I think that was a big, big advantage. And I think he, he would, if we were to choose him, he would step in with a lot of that type of, of knowledge that somebody else would have to, have to look into, have to, have to learn. But I was really impressed by all, all three. The one thing I would say, and, and I've, I've looked a lot for Mr., Mr. Silver, I, I think he, as I said, I think he's a great candidate. I think the town would do very well if he was the town administrator. I just question whether it's really doable to live in Beverly and be the town administrator in Carver. I've done my best to get up in the morning and go into Google Maps and, and look to see how long the commute is between Beverly and, and Carver. And the shortest I've ever seen it is an hour and forty-nine minutes. Now, I, I discussed that with him. He certainly indicated that he was willing to do it, and I, and I, and I believe him. I just question as we continue on, and he, I, I just, I couldn't do it. I know I, if, if the, if the commute were in reverse and I was going to Beverly, I, I couldn't do that. And I just, yeah, for, for that reason, and that reason alone, I had him ranked as my, my third candidate, just because I don't see that as a viable long-term solution. The one thing I think is very important with this hire is we need someone who's going to be here for a long term. We don't, we don't need a town administrator to command and be gone in, in another twelve months. And I just, I, I, I just don't see that as a doable, a doable commute. So those are, those are my thoughts on those candidates. Who would like to go second? Don't all jump in at the same time.
I can, I can go second.
Mr. Ryan?
Okay. So, yeah, we had a great process, I think, again, the candidates from the discussions, and we had the chiefs here on, you know, where we fortunately participated in everything. And they were amazed that the, the candidates this go-around, they said, were probably among the best we've had, you know? And, and again, they, same thing, they said any one of them, they, they thought would do fine with, with what needed to be, you know, for the, to fill in the position. So I, I kind of looked at, you know, the needs of the town. Financial leadership and skills, certainly. I mean, we now have a, a great new finance director, but having those skills to help us, you know, to continue to, you know, be able to, you know, be sound financially in the future, I looked at that level. I looked at the personnel, you know, management and all that, the management styles, the motivational part, and then the leadership, because we, we rely on leadership strengths. You know, being able to ask the town administrator for assistance on various matters. We also talked about the legal aspect, you know, the skills there, because we want to keep our legal costs down. And I looked at availability too. So I think financially, you know, in, from my, you know, talking to the candidates and the questions and everything, clearly, Mr. Silver seemed to stand out at the top. He really had an in-depth knowledge of budgets, you know, and the workings of budgets, the ability to plan, you know, the interaction of all the different departments and all that. So I think he seemed to exceed in that. And then I thought kind of going next, you know, Mystica Chorus and Cannon were, you know, pretty close, but some of the comments I heard about Mystica Chorus kind of put him up a little bit above that. Person, managing people, the styles, motivation, I think, again, what we, what I heard about Mystica Chorus was at the top, he, you know, very passionate, you know, highly motivational. And then Mr. Silver had put in an employee of the month program, and we heard that turnaround that he took and turned everybody around. You know, the demeanor of the office and everything, from negative to very positive on that side. Then the leadership and strengths, I think going back to experience and what people have done, I'd have to agree, Mr. Kacoris seems like he had a wealth of background, the water commissioner thing. You know, we struggle here with the North Carver Water District, and it's probably tiny compared to like what he dealt with and all that. So his knowledge of that is, was, was high. And, you know, one of the, yeah, I'll get into that part down at the bottom there. But I, I think, you know, he also has good connections, you know, great connections that could help the town to Carver on that. And then I, I heard a lot of good, you know, examples and stories about Mr. Silver's leadership. You know, they were all impressed and happy with, with his leadership too. I think on the legal side, the skills, they all told us they, that's at the bottom of their list. So they all seem to be probably equal, on par, you know, with their, their skills there. Availability. So I think availability, we just talked about that a minute ago. So a couple of aspects with the availability. So I do agree with you, that's been one of my big concerns about Mr. Silver is, you know, just a distance despite, he's got, you know, great financial skills and management, but I, I think that it's important to the town. I think Braintree's not that bad, it's only thirty-four miles away. I don't consider that even an issue, you know, right now. But Mr. Cannon is, of course, the most local. The other aspect of availability that we have to think about too, is that Mystica Chorus is not under any contracts right now. So he's available to start next week if we said, hey, you know, and we, one of our issues right now is getting ready for town meeting and getting through some of the problems we have. And I just don't know what contracts the other two are under, whether they have to fulfill a three-month contract or two-month. I wasn't given that information. A lot of times, we know when you have a town administrator that there's a, you know, there is a contract in there of months.
So, so I can offer you a little insight on that. So Mr. Cannon has a thirty-day commitment. I, I don't know about Mr. Silver, Mr. Cannon has a thirty-day commitment.
All right. So again, they're very close, but I think potentially based on maybe similar, the availability, I'd probably have to put on Mr. Silver third, even though I, I think he's very, very, very strong. But it's just that, that availability part, that same thing.
Who would like to go next? Mr. Hoffman?
Sure, sure, I'll go. Again, looking at all three, very high, they're high-quality individuals, both from a leadership standpoint, you know, treating the employees fairly, all seem to think out of the box, some have more experience than others. Jason is my first pick, if he had lived in Wareham, Carver, Plymouth. He seemed to have, sometimes you look and you interview someone and something triggers, well, something you don't like, you know? But all three of these people, nothing ever happened like that. They all seem to bring a, a lot of worth to the table. Jason, I like his financial expertise, I also like the fact that he was out-of-the-box thinker. Geography is an issue. Mr. Kacoris, there is an attraction there with regards to, he seemed, he seems to have done it all. He is someone that could start fairly soon. He seems to have a, a lot of experience. I don't know if I'm concerned about someone coming from a big city environment or some, of some sort down to, you know, to Carver. But I think he could handle any challenges coming, coming his way. Glenn, I think is a, he's a, he was an engineer in a prior life, I think, before he got into...
He was, yeah, he was an engineer.
Yeah.
Civil engineer.
Civil engineer, before he got into the, I guess, municipal government. I think he was the assistant T A for Bourne, and he's been at Rochester now for a few years. I mean, there's, there's a benefit there, he knows the area. I'm not sure if Rochester, from a standpoint of, if it's similar from its operations to Carver, but I think he's someone that would fit right in right away. Again, he seems to have strong financial skills. I think he's faced some issues in Rochester, but I think they were there before he started. So, yeah, I mean, I think if I had to, unfortunately, if I had to pick the third, only because of distance, would be Jason. I mean, I've done that, I've done the commute from Carver to Cambridge for about a year and a half, and that's how long it lasted, a year and a half. So my concern is someone coming down, having late nights on Tuesdays, whether they be late nights and other meetings during the week. I think he's got two sons, one in the eighth grade, one in, was a senior. I think it would just, it'd be a lot. So I guess unfortunately, I have to put him as a third.
Well, I guess, before we hear from our other two members, it seems pretty clear from the first three that Mr. Silver is our, our third. I don't know how you two folks feel. Mr. Hoffman, you want to start it off?
Sure. I agree with, with what Mark, what you said. These are the best three candidates I've ever had at one time. It's all a tough decision with Mr. Silver. I didn't want the, the distance to be the only reason not to choose him, but it just keeps coming back to me that, again, late nights and climate weather during the winter. And the other thing that, you know, if you think of it, a couple of years in and the commute does get to him, then we have to look for a new one if he starts to look elsewhere. I'm not saying it would, but again, because these three, I think, are so close, I would have to have Mr. Silver's last and Mr. Cannon and Mr. Chorus as my top two.
Sarah?
Thank you. I have some concerns about Braintree's eighteen million dollar budget shortfall this year. And I know that that sort of thing doesn't happen overnight, so I don't, I'm not attributing it to any one particular mayor, but he was mayor there for a while. And they are going to have to lay off not just teachers, but police officers and other public safety officials, apparently. So that, that concerns me a lot. And also, I think we have completely different issues here in a town like Carver from, from a city like Braintree. I just think, yes, he's available, and yes, he's done a lot of things. And I didn't get the sense that there was a lot of depth to all that knowledge, but rather that he had spent some time doing various things, which is good, there's nothing inherently wrong with that. But I think it's better to see some depth of knowledge, just my opinion. Mr. Silver was very eager, and I too am concerned, I don't want to be doing this again in a year. And I, I'm sure he feels he can do it, but that can wear on you, four hours a day driving. So, and I think that Glenn Cannon, just, I think we need someone with local knowledge. He knows our economy. I can't remember whether he said this in our private conversation or here, but apparently he almost went into the cranberry industry at one point, and then decided, he had such a strong interest in math and finances that he went into civil engineering and then town administration. I just think he has what we need now. I think he's going to be here for a while. So, and again, I have some concerns, I, I don't think we need a mayor in Carver. We have five mayors. That's enough. So I guess I would pick Glenn Cannon as mine.
We're going, we're just dropping, we're just picking the one to drop off.
So we're going to drop, I think we're all pretty much agreed, we're going to drop Mr. Silver from the discussions, we all, we're all there.
I just had a couple of points, and maybe Mr. Carter can correct me, but I don't think, since you raised that, I don't think the budget issue in Braintree was a result of the...
Just before we move on, I just want to make sure, so we're, we're all, we're all agreed that we're dropping Mr. Silver from the discussions, right?
And I don't know if, if Ms. Hewens agrees.
Yes, yes.
So, okay, so we're going to, we're going to focus our discussions on Mr. Kacoris and Mr. Cannon.
Okay.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
All right. No, so I, I think, and maybe Mr. Carter can correct me, but the budget, that budget shortfall issue did come up during our reference check. And it sounded like that, you know, Mr. Kacoris on his own, after the fact, hadn't, didn't have anything to do with it, but went in and assisted behind the scenes, you know, voluntarily to try to, to help out, you know, the, the situation. But I didn't get a sense from the, the chiefs that we talked to that he was in any way related to that, that issue at all. So, yeah, just wanted to bring that up and maybe Mr. Carter.
And again, these things don't happen overnight.
Right.
And I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting that he personally was responsible for it, but I think it probably happened over a period of years, some of which he was there for.
Okay. No, that came up in, in our one-on-one discussion, and I was, I was struck by the fact that he volunteered to go back and, and help out. I thought that, that showed, showed a lot. So, that was my, my, my thought on that. But it certainly is a, is a concern. And...
So I guess if, is, so we're on the discussion now between the two?
Between the two.
Okay. So I guess it's that experience that they bring to Carver versus the localness. I know that's a tough one, but I don't consider Braintree being a million miles away in a different, you know, state or anything. So I, I just, all the experience I saw, you know, that Mystica Chorus had, as we said, he was a, you know, and, and we did have that talk, I think, you know, he, he didn't win the election for mayor, his goal is to be a town administrator. be a town administrator. That's what he wants to do. He was chairman of the Board of Selectmen. He served on the selectmen. He served on the school committee, planning board. So he's been involved with so many different aspects of town government, so I just...
Almost everything, almost everything in town government.
So, I mean, my feeling is just the experience was, you know, between, you know, his financial, you know, working with people, a very, you know, passionate, highly motivator with people, the leadership, you know, the chief said that, you know, he had that veterans center that he led the charge on that they developed. The chief said that, you know, he was always supporting them and finding ways to get like new apparatus and, you know, finding ways in the budget to support them as needed. You know, and I, I don't consider the availability to be an issue. As I said, it's only 34 miles away. It's, it's not really that bad. So I, I think the experience he brings to the table, especially with the water commissioner background and everything, just hit home with me as to a lot of things we need as a town that might be, in my eyes, higher than the local piece of this, because just, I felt it's more important to get the experience that we can rely on when we ask questions as a board. Hey, how would we handle this? You know, it's that experience level and understanding was very strong for me.
Who would like to go next? Mr. Hoffman?
Sure. So again, you know, I think we, we can't lose with that either. But my personal, I look, the thing that impressed me most was the local, small-town experience, where someone actually input with all the budgets, input, you know, with everything that a town administrator would have to do. And I'm not saying that, that a mayor is, is just delegates of that. Said he had to get involved as well. But I think more hands-on Mr. Cannon would be. And that's the type of thing we need. It's, it's, and then again, the whole city versus, versus town, I'm sure, if, if he, if Mystic Akoros does get selected, he would do a fine job. But I think it's a breaking-in period type thing, where again, he oversaw all this. I don't, I just think, in my opinion, I think Mr. Cannon had more experience for what we need for this town.
God.
That's...
Is yours, Phil?
Yes, thank you. I, I agree. I think that, I think it's very, very important that we get someone who's the right fit for Carver. And while some may think Braintree is not all that different, it's different. It's certainly not Carver in the way that a Middleborough or Rochester or Bourne is much closer to Carver. And I think, I was also struck, I have to say this, he was the only one who actually had questions for me. So, you know, how is the board? How, how is the staff, you know? And what, what's it like, you know, in the, in the town, working in the town? He knows it's slightly different from, from the towns he's been in. But it was nice to actually be asked a question. I...
Mr.?
Mr. Cannon. Mr. Cannon, Glenn Cannon. I was, the other two had no questions. They were all set. And that troubles me when someone doesn't, doesn't have questions, just assumes that maybe they know.
Well, thanks. You just reminded me of that. During our, our one-on-one interviews, he said, you know, I did some research. I saw that you ran as a writing candidate. How, you know, how'd you, how'd you do that? And I'm like...
Who said this?
Mr. Cannon. How'd you know that? Oh, I searched, you know, one on Facebook and searched it. I did, you know, I did some homework. And it kind of, it was just strange. That was the first one, that my first person I interviewed, so I started that day off. And like you said, after that, there wasn't much, just a little thing, though. But you just, you just reminded me of that, so.
Mr. Carter?
I guess I'm torn. One is that I kind of like the idea of someone that has the ability to build a bigger commercial base here, to help take the burden of taxes off the residents. Sometimes if you get someone that's used to small towns, they manage small towns. So, but then again, that's a positive, because I do like the idea that he knows what we go through, and he knows some of the challenges that we're facing. Again, I'm kind of 50/50 on both of them right now.
Okay. Well, we're at the spot. We're, we're gonna have to move forward, I think. I will, I will just say that these two candidates, I, I, I'm telling you, I, I felt like I could flip a coin between the two of them. I, I really, really liked the local experience that Mr. Cannon brings. I just think that's a big attribute to have somebody who knows, I mean, he does live in Carver, but he lives in Middleborough, and he knows the town, and you don't have to, he knows the issues that a small town has. But I was, I was really, really struck by the, the, the research that Mr. Akoros had done into the town of Carver. And, you know, in my discussions with these three, nobody else had done the, near the level of, of research that Mr. Akoros had, had done. So I was very impressed. And I will tell you, I think whichever one of these gentlemen, we end up moving, moving on. I think it's a benefit for the town. I really think the town is going to be well-served by, by either of them. I think both of them are readily available. I mean, Mr. Akoros, obviously, is probably available a little bit quicker than Mr. Cannon, but neither of them have 90-day commitments or something like that. They're, they're both available, you know, about as quickly as you could expect. And I think, I think they're, they're both, both excellent candidates. Does anyone else want to say anything, or are we, we're ready to move forward?
I think we're ready, probably.
I think we're ready. All right. So what we'll do is, we'll just go first to second, just our first choice, and someone will get at least three, and...
Are we going to take a vote, too?
I think if, if someone gets three, then someone can make a motion to enter into contract negotiations with that person.
I'd like to, I know, again, they're both very, very close. I'd like to make sure that the full support of the board is behind whoever we choose, so we can at least maybe push out our...
No, I think, I think that's, that's the purpose of going around and having just to say, this is, this is, this is the top one, and then, yeah, and I agree. I think it would be a good idea. Obviously, people have to vote the way they feel they need to vote, but it certainly would be nice to have a, a vote of confidence in...
To off the start again, I mean, I think you've heard, I think the experi, I like, I mean, the local is important. I, I agree, having somebody who knows the area. But then I think John, Mr. Carter, hit a point about moving us forward in the future, too. And so I'm gonna keep that. I think Mystic Akoros is my top choice still because of the experience he could bring to the town. And then, well, I'll keep him as my top choice.
Sarah, would you like to go next?
Oh, yes, I'm going to keep Glenn Cannon as my top choice.
Okay. Mr. Hoffman?
Mr. Cannon is my top choice.
Mr. Carter?
I guess I'm going with my gut, from a standpoint of it's kind of going against my, my process, from a standpoint of growing the town. But I, I think Glenn Cannon would probably be my, my selection.
Who?
Glenn Cannon.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with that. I mean, I'm telling you, I felt like I could flip a, flip a coin between these two individuals. But I just think, because they're so even, the local experience is just something that Mr. Mystic Akoros doesn't have. So with that, we have four ranking Mr. Cannon number one. And, and I just want to say that I think, I think the consultant here did a wonderful job, and the town administrator screening committee did a wonderful job. And these candidates, really, I, I, you'll agree, we, we've never had this, this level of candidates.
I, I agree. And we've gone through this several times. I to, I totally agree.
So at this point, is there a motion?
I'm... Oh, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, to select Glenn Cannon as our next town administrator.
Second.
Well, Ms. Weston, would you recommend that the motion be to enter into contract negotiations with Mr. Cannon?
Right, because they would have to agree.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, then I'll...
amend it.
amend that to, I vote to offer Glenn Cannon can the negotiations for a town administrator contract.
I'll second that.
Enter into negotiation, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second.
What the end is.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. It is unanimous. Thank you. Let's see. Town Administrator update. Ms. Weston?
So today, operations and maintenance installed the turtle protection silt fencing around the pickleball area. And that is located behind the Council on Aging. Parking spots will be lost, because the fencing must encompass the entire work area. So, for example, when they have a big event, people tend to park on the grass area, and that will not be available. The fencing is buried eight inches in the ground and must remain intact. The certified turtle biologist will be inspecting the site weekly once work begins. I want to congratulate Town Clerk Kara Dayhill, who recently qualified for the Mass Town Clerk Association's certificate, sorry, Certified Mass Municipal Clerk designation. She will be receiving her pin and certificate on June 6. And about only a third of town clerks hold this designation. Connie Kelly, the Council on Aging Director, is in the process of becoming a Certified Council on Aging Director. And the school committee, I'm sorry, the school, will be presenting their budget update to the Finance Committee on April 22. And the board is invited to attend that meeting.
All right. Any questions?
Do. Could maybe the next meeting get an update on the library? I, I know we had previously had updates on the, you know, the painting or whatever was going to be done there, and it, I haven't heard anything in a while.
I don't think the RFP is not done, right? Yeah, they're, they're still working on the RFP.
Okay.
That is, that's the update.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right. Let's see. We have the approval of the minutes. The March 19 open and executive session minutes. We approved these at the last meeting. However, upon review, we noticed an error in them, which needs to correct, needs to be corrected. What happened was the motion to go, the wording for the motion to go into executive session, that was included in the executive session minutes. But obviously, that motion happened in open session. So we need to, we need to revote those minutes as, as amended. And the only change is the motion to go into executive session is being moved out of the executive session minutes and into the open session.
Make a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All right. We probably should have separate, separate motions, one for the open session minutes and one for the executive session.
Make a motion to approve the amendment to the March 19, 2024, open session minutes?
Second.
All right. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And then...
And I'll make a motion to approve the amended executive session minutes.
Second.
All right, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. And let's see. And we have the minutes of March 28, 2024.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Set a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Let's see. Topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair. There are, there are none. Select Board announcements. Ms. Hewens, you'd like to start us off?
Sure, thank you. The Friends of the Carver Council on Aging is holding a fundraiser to benefit programs for seniors at the COA. And if you go to their website, and I believe there will be some available here at the Select Board's office, it's a fundraising with Cupcake Charlie. And you can fill out your order, and it closes on April 12. So you still have a few days to do this. And as always, I'd like to remind people, please, to remember and to donate to Shane Gives Thanks Food Pantry.
Mr. Hoffman?
I just want to remind people of the Canesong Golf outing on May 11. The golf portion is filled, but we are still looking for raffle items. And if you want to sponsor a hole, please get in touch with me. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Ryan?
I'd like to echo again that the process for the town administrator was really good. I mean, the one-on-ones were, I think, a great idea, and, and being able to talk to the references. And then I'd like to wish students and faculty a good, safe, and happy, fun school vacation next week.
All right, great. Mr. Carter?
I just, again, like to echo thanking the three candidates for their time coming down and interviewing. And again, it's too bad we couldn't hire all three.
All right. Thank you. And for myself, I just, I just want to thank the board for their cooperation and the whole town administrator hiring process. I think it really well, went really well. We've done it a little bit differently this time than we had in the past. But I think it worked really well. We were really able to, to get a lot more information. So, so, so thank you. And I also want to join Ms. Weston in congratulating Town Clerk Kara Dayhill. I think that's a tremendous achievement.
Mr. Townsend, could I add one more thing? I, I also wanted to, like Mr. Ryan, I wanted to thank our Town Administrator Screening Committee for the awesome job they did, as well as the consultant. I think it was probably the best. They were the best group yet, too.
The whole process was very...
The whole process was good, yeah.
And a lot of work, time that everybody put in.
And they did a lot of time in a short period. We gave them some pretty strict deadlines, and they, they reached them. Good job.
So our next scheduled meeting is April 16. However, I do want to make the board aware that depending on what happens with town administrator negotiations, we may need to adjust that, that meeting date a little bit. So that's, it's scheduled for April 16, but there may be, need to be a little flexibility.
Is there a time? Will we change in the time to 6 o'clock?
This, this meeting is scheduled for 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
And that's our, our regular...
Regular time.
Meeting time from now on. If we need to adjust for some reason, or we need an executive session, that could possibly change the time. But right now, the schedule, the meeting is scheduled for 6, 6 p.m. And with that, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to discuss strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-UN personnel, Town Administrator Glenn Cannon, and/or possible Town Administrator Glenn Cannon. And if discussions would have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town, and to not to return to open session. What motion?
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Ryan?
Mr. Ryan says aye.
John Carter says aye.
Mark Townsend says aye.
Jim Hoffman says aye.
Sarah Hewens says aye.
All right, great, thank you. We are in executive session. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.